Well, welcome. Tonight, we're going to talk with somebody, one of those unique individuals in Milford, who not only has an opinion and wants to tell us what to do, but actually puts her time and all of her efforts into doing things, making things happen, helping our children. So tonight, we'll start with an introduction. Meg?
Excellent. Thank you, Al. My name is Megan Hornberger. I am the proud mom to three boys. I am a certified public accountant in the state of Massachusetts, and I'm employed by a renewable energy company based in Boston. And I am also proudly serving as the current vice chairperson of our school committee.
Now, you've been here before. It's always the same question, the start and end. Meg, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
I had a feeling you might ask that, Al. So absolutely. I hope to have earned your vote in the past three years that I've served on the committee. But I believe I am a qualified candidate because I'm hardworking, I'm accountable, and I'm transparent. And I hope that I have been very responsive in the opportunity that I've served the community in the past three years.
The biggest talk lately has been about COVID-19 options and getting children back to class. Comments?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think everyone, Al, who works with and for the district, and certainly who sends their children to the district, wants their kids in school. I think that is the one front everyone is united upon. I think, you know, it's really interesting when I think back, you know, we sat here three or so years ago and kind of had the same conversation. And the question everyone asked you as a candidate then, right, is how do you feel about Proposition 2 and 1/2, right? And now it's what would you do in the middle of a worldwide pandemic? I think the world has just shifted so fundamentally due to the challenges that we've seen in the last year. I want our kids back in school, and I truly believe that we are headed in that direction. I think, you know, the current numbers in our town, the new guidance that's come out from the CDC, and the proximity to vaccinations for our staff are all things that are going to get us there.
What's keeping us from having the kids go back?
Well, the six-foot of distance is really still the recommendation. So we aren't able, you know, in the current spacing, to do that right away. I think there is some talk that you could reduce that. So that's definitely something that we're taking a look at. And I think, you know, once we're able to get our kind of first responders, our staff lined up for the vaccine, that'll be another big hurdle out of the way.
Now, I've heard a lot of the teachers talk about wanting to get back to class because it seems like everybody agrees on one thing, that we're better off having the kids live than on remote. But yet, how do we balance the safety? Because for some reason, which I'll never understand, our teachers don't rate. You know, you have first responders, which nobody would gripe about. And it seems like dogs, cats, and other unique animals are ahead of our teachers. What are we going to do? I mean, do you feel that we can send the teachers back in without being vaccinated?
My preference would be that they at least have the opportunity to be vaccinated, Al. So, you know, the committee last week did pass a resolution, which we forwarded on to our legislators in terms of prioritizing them. Because I think they absolutely should be afforded the opportunity if we're asking them to go back into the buildings. I can't explain, you know, why they weren't given that kind of, you know, first phase one priority. But it is certainly my hope and expectation that as morados has become available, they will be deemed, you know, at least as important as everyone that's been given it so far and get the opportunity to get in line.
It's hard for me to really look at somebody and say, we want you to be in the first line, but, man, we don't really rate you as first line. So you don't get to get vaccinated till your age comes in.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you know, we've given, you know, restaurants and, you know, gyms and all these other great establishments, you know, threshold for which they can open. And, you know, we just need to be focused on our priorities and get these kids back in school.
How are we doing overall at the school? I mean, initially, PPE, you know, it's a year ago, was limited. I remember having to buy N95 masks through my lab supplier to give to some of the teachers who needed them. How are we doing now?
Yeah, my take certainly, Al, is that we have what we need in terms of the PPE. I think I was part of the reopening committee that kind of evaluated how we were going to open the buildings back in September. And we went through a lot of different conversations there, right? Are we going to do the N95s for staff? At the time, they actually weren't available. They were kind of saved for, you know, the medical field. Are we going to put up plexiglass in between all the desks? We went through all these different factors. But in terms of the PPE that's recommended for staff today, we have the items that we need. We have an inventory of it. So we felt comfortable that we have the supplies that we need to give to teachers. And we were actually handing out N95 masks over the past two weeks to teachers who were requesting them. So gloves, masks, right, like all that sort of thing, the cleaning products that accompanies it, all those sort of items.
Yeah, that's always a dual-edged sword. Because when I put on an N95, it's like that movie Alien. I can see why they're effective because they're like clamped onto you.
Yeah, they're rough. If you've used them, they're rough. Again, you know, people should have a choice. And if they want to use them, they most certainly should be available. The same is true with their face shields. We made those available. You know, it's up to teachers if that's something that they want to utilize in their classrooms as well.
Well, I think that's all you can really do. You can't force somebody to be vaccinated. You can't force somebody to use an N95 versus a KN95. But if you make it available to them, I think that's the most you can do.
Absolutely. We will force our students to wear a mask and to wash their hands. And so if your child doesn't want to do that, they should pick the remote learning model because those are things that we are requiring of the children in the building. But absolutely, in terms of the PPE, we want to have it available and teachers can select.
Yeah, but you're not requiring them to wear a specific mask.
No, we do want it to have that three ply, right? Initially, those, gee, I'm going to forget the name, totally escaping me. Kind of the things you could pull up, right? Those were really popular.
Oh, the neck things?
Thank you, the gaiters, sorry, the gaiters. They were super popular. And it really was deemed that they're only one ply and so that they're not, in those cases, strong enough. So that is something we moved away from. But in terms of the masks, yes, as long as you have a mask.
So now, as a parent, I have a choice of opting for the remote model or the, you're moving to the hybrid model?
Correct.
What are the advantages of each?
So I'd call it hybrid plus, Al, because I actually think the hybrid that we're offering to our students after February vacation is significantly improved from what they were given in the fall in that they will go into the building two days a week. They will be online with their teacher on Wednesdays. And sorry, when I speak initially, I'm talking of the younger kids. So grade K through 3, say. And then they will Zoom in the room with their teacher and their other cohort classmates for one or two subjects, depending on the other two days. Our fifth graders and up will actually be kind of in that hybrid model where they're in the building two days, they're online for the remote Wednesday, and then they're fully in the room with their teacher on the other two days. So it's kind of a hybrid plus in terms of the synchronous learning will actually be taking place five days a week, which is fantastic for our students. In the remote model, you're getting the online synchronous instruction five days a week from teachers. And so I really believe, you know, it's just personal choice. You may have a compromised immune system in the household and you just truly don't feel comfortable sending your child. Like, I completely respect that. My children benefit from the social interaction, you know, so I've chosen to send them to school. I think I've seen the difference, and I'm really glad that they'll be going back and that they have been back. I think it's important for them. So, you know, again, I think it's kind of evaluating your own situation and seeing what works best for you and your family.
Well, I think one of the measures that I use is the people in charge, where are they sending their kids?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, so I see more and more confidence measures when you say, well, I'm sending my children to school. If you're worried.
Absolutely. I do think there was some thought in the beginning of the year. There was sort of a known, a known that at some point we would have to go remote in terms of everyone predicted that the numbers would spike as we headed toward the holidays. And in fact, that did happen. And so I do know of people who selected remote simply that so that they wouldn't have to go through that transition. Whatever the model was that their children had is one that they would stay in, which, again, that makes complete sense to me. So I would say it's more about families selecting the model that works best for their, you know, home-family life balance. And for me, that was certainly the hybrid piece.
Well, and again, you start looking, saying, is there a measurement on how the kids are doing? Do you, I mean, I've heard the rumors. But do you have any insight into how the kids doing who are in the new either remote or hybrid model?
Sure. So I think we have a few measures. We purchased a tool over the last two years, which has been fantastic. It's called iReady. And so we get kind of direct data measurements on different points, ELA and math, and in grades, which gives us real-time feedback in terms of how are they doing versus the curriculum. So I think that's one important measure for us. I also think there's, there's really this year a key SEL component to all of this. I think everyone's lives has kind of been turned upside down. And I think we need to really take a step back and say, you know, how are our kids doing at some sort of fundamental level in terms of how they're navigating this difficult time? You know, and Milford is a community where we have a lot of economic diversity. You know, and we're feeding a lot of meals during this time as well. And so for me, I kind of take a step back and look at the whole picture. I look at my children and the workload that they're assigned and the work that they're doing. And I can assure you that they're learning. I see their progress in different subjects. I see the, you know, assessments that they're taking. So I would say by all measures, you know, we're getting through this. And I think we're doing a great job.
So the rumors are true that the kids are keeping up with the curriculum?
They are, Al. I do think, you know, we have some gaps from last spring because we didn't go right away into a synchronous learning model. And so I do think it would be unfair to say they are exactly where they would have been because through March, through the end of the year, it wasn't the learning that we're used to. And so I do think that we'll be recovering that from that for a bit. But I think the interaction that they're getting now with their teachers and the daily curriculum, you know, is really helping to move them along.
Now, you talk about kids wearing masks and hand sanitizer. You got Group A or Cohort A comes in Monday, Tuesday. B comes in Thursday, Friday. What steps are taken to keep B safe from A or A safe from B?
Yep, sure. So we, it's kind of, it's called a protectus system. So we use kind of a high-scale cleaning system that comes in. And basically, we're doing that during the day even while they're there, right? Because if a Cohort A kid is sick, we don't want them to get another Cohort A kid sick. So we're doing all the high-touch surfaces even during the day. And then we're doing a deeper cleaning at night and kind of in between those cohorts.
But what, do you know what that means when you say cleaning? Are they spraying? Are they just?
Yeah, it's a backpack thing. If you've seen it, they kind of walk around with a gun and they shoot all the areas. So, yeah, I've seen that in action, and it's meant to spray down.
Oh, so it is contact disinfecting? Cool. Now, as we start looking at the kids that are home, how is that working? Because, you know, I always worry. Today's day and age, two-income families are almost a given. If I want remote, because, okay, if my kids are in school, I'm old. I have the comorbidities of being overweight, diabetic, you know. For once, bald doesn't count against me. But, you know, you go through it and you say, if I'm worried and I want to have my children fully remote, how much of a burden is that placing? Are you hearing about anything like that?
I mean, I would say it depends, Al, right? So, I mean, even just for my own children who have been remote basically since just before Thanksgiving, you know, up until after the holidays. I think it depends on the child. I mean, my eighth grader, basically, I don't hear from all day. So he's navigating the system, you know, he's making it work. He's interacting with teachers. On occasion, I'll hear, you know, a quick update. But it's certainly not that I need to assist. My second grader more comes in to check in because he's looking, you know, looking just to see how things are going. Actually, this is a cute story. So they have a lunch break in the middle of the day, a longer lunch break. And I was on a call, we were preparing for a larger meeting at work, and someone asked if I would test the breakout feature on Zooms. And at the time, my eight-year-old had just walked over. And he said, oh, would you like me to show you how to do that? And so I think they've gotten so in tune and, you know, really adapted the technology that they don't require a lot of assistance. On occasion, in the household, we've had internet issues. And so they'll come over, hey, this isn't working. I'm like, yeah, it's not working for me either. But I think, speaking at least for myself, so second grader and up, they've really been able to do it. I'm sure that's not the same for a kindergarten parent, you know. And I don't have that student to kind of assess what level of involvement that would take. I would assume it's certainly more on the parental front. But I also know our kindergarten teachers and how well they know those students. And I'm sure they're adapting it so that it works for them as well.
If you look now for the upcoming year and the next three years that you're in your position, what do you think the three biggest challenges will be?
Sure. So, I mean, I think we have kind of that short-term right in front of us challenge to get these kids back in school. And I am incredibly hopeful that before, perhaps even, you know, this term is up, that that will be resolved. And so that won't be something that we're talking about anymore. I think looking forward, we need to start to think about, you know, some really larger, longer-range scale facilities planning. You know, I think we have some big-ticket items coming down the pipe that we really need to talk about that investment. And then always just for me, how do you move the district forward? You know, where should we invest, investing next? Be it curriculum or technology and just kind of, you know, where do we need to be putting those dollars?
Now, when you say big-ticket items, is that, there's a school coming?
There's, I think there's a school coming, yeah. I think that would be a reasonable, actually, a reasonable assumption, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the reality, I'll write that the high school has been around forever. It's a great building. It's served us well. And in some form, it will need to be updated. And so we need to figure out exactly what that looks like. And honestly, I think we would have been further down that path had kind of the pandemic not hit and, you know, kind of the budget standstill that we hit last year faced just in terms of planning for it. I think, you know, we kind of took a little bit of a pause just given the situation of 2020. But that's something we're definitely really focused on.
Now, if people started really talking about, do we renovate? Do we build? Is there any real discussion going on yet that you can talk about?
Yeah, I would say they were preliminary. So, again, when we were allowed to all meet in a room back in 2019, we did have a number of kind of community forums and surveys for people to get together and, you know, express input. There's a lot of talk about, you know, is a renovation an option? Because keeping the pool, I personally think is a priority. I'd love to see us keep the pool, which I don't know would be a given if we did a new build just given the way the kind of reimbursement works from the state. So I think it's too preliminary to have assessed that to tell you what we'll do. But I think everything is on the table right now.
Yeah, I think you've hit it on the head. Realistically, I think, you know, the idea of, let's build a brand-new $200-plus-million-high-school gulp, you know, the dollars will scare me. But giving up a pool and giving up an auditorium? I mean, that one seems like too bitter of a pill to swallow.
Yeah, and I personally haven't visited any of the newer renovations. But I've heard some fantastic things. So, you know, I think we should be looking at everything to, you know, be evaluating the pros and cons in terms of what we're able to do. I also, my understanding is if we were doing Woodland now, kind of that incremental cost, just given those additional years, it would be pretty phenomenal. So definitely from a cost standpoint, we need to be taking a look at what's the smartest thing for our community.
Yeah, well, like in Woodland, we couldn't have an auditorium. We had to go with that cafeteria thing?
Yes, yes.
I mean, it works.
It works, absolutely.
You know, when you sit there and say, the SBIR won't pay for it, won't pay for a pool, plus, I don't know where you'd put it.
Right.
The only room we have is up by Asylum Street. And who wants to have a school that far away?
Yeah, there are very few options there, that piece we have talked about. So it does seem, at least right now, like our current footprint would be it. But again, that will be part of the kind of official assessment process that we'll go through.
Well, hopefully, in about seven years, we can talk about having enough money tucked away?
Absolutely.
You know, everybody always laughs because as soon as Woodland was paid for, everybody said, why are you putting money away in stabilization? I said, there's a school coming. And that was the high school. Now, so when you talk about new areas, it's always a question about initiatives. If you were given the magic wand, what would be the number one or two initiative you would implement?
I think in thinking about, you know, the current state of our district, Al, I really would like to see a significant investment in kind of the post-secondary success readiness for our students. And so I think when you look at the key industries and areas in Massachusetts, be that biomedical, from our technology, kind of how can we be making investments in these kids so that they've had more hands-on experience in high school? So they're ready, either college or career-wise, to kind of take that initial first step. And I think we're doing that, right? I think we've made a great investment in the science labs, heads up. We're going to be asking for another. Phase two is coming on our next capital request. And so, you know, I think we're there, but I would love to see that work continued. We've also talked about a dual-language program at the early levels, at the early elementary levels. I really would love to see all of our students learning two languages at that very elementary level. And so if we're able to fund a program like that, I think that has a lot of opportunity.
Well, I mean, that's something that a lot of school systems have put in.
Yes.
I mean, to this day, I'll never forget Anne-Marie Longo, my French teacher, who reminded me, because when I was at Stacy, I said, Ms. Longo, I don't know why you're forcing me to learn French. I will never use French. I will never need French. Yeah, when I came back from, when I moved back to Milford, somehow 30 years later, she remembered that quote and said, by the way, where did you just move back from? I said, Paris. So so far, you know, when you say you don't need something, and of course, as an eighth grader, I knew everything.
Naturally. I have one of those. I know the feeling.
The language would be a wonderful thing because more and more, we're finding in industry, being multilingual because of the global economy gives you a leg up.
Absolutely.
And if you wait till college to learn it, you're already at a disadvantage.
100%. And I think that's a huge advantage we give our kids just in terms of the diversity that they experience in our schools, right? It looks like the real world. And I think our kids, our kids know that from pre-K. And I think we need to be celebrating that as really one, you know, a great success.
So now, let's talk about the budget. You mentioned the budget. I mean, normally, there's too much money and not enough to spend it on. Isn't that how it works?
Always, always, right. Maybe we were at a different meeting?
I got a different memo. How are we doing budget-wise?
Look, last year was very difficult, Al, right? We had a number of initiatives that we wanted to move forward, and we all agreed it was in the best interests of our community and our district to not do that just given the state of the pandemic and really not knowing where the state was going to come out in terms of the funding. And so we didn't move that forward. And so those certainly are items that we want to see on the table this year. Enrollment is actually really interesting. And so it had been up about like 200 students, right, over, say, five years ago, which is basically a full, almost a full class size, kind of an astronomical number, if you think about it. And so I think we're also looking to kind of backfill some of that. I will caveat that with saying enrollment this year is not that high primarily because I think a lot of people whose child was eligible for either pre-K or kindergarten didn't enroll them just given the state of everything going on. They wanted to wait the year. So it will be interesting kind of in the fall where we see those numbers fall because we would still predict that they're kind of that higher than average. Did that answer your question? So this is number?
Yeah. Biggest thing is, when you say not that high, I mean, I always brought up to the school committee that we were adding, 1974, we graduated 222. That was my class, first one out of the new high school. 30 years later, we've added 30 children. We're, you know, 35. I think it got all the way up to 260. And then all of a sudden, it seemed to jump almost 250 kids in three years.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, that's basically that full class size, right? That's a significant number of students. And then they're, you know, kind of embedded throughout the district. And so you do see all of your class sizes rise when that happens. The other thing I would like to just kind of think about there is we're also talking about some new building in Milford. And those apartments will likely have, that housing will likely have additional students. And so, you know, we can't budget or, you know, incorporate those dollars with those teachers now. But I just think it's something that we should be thinking about as we're having these discussions. Point being, I don't think enrollment is going to decrease as we move forward. So I just, it's something we should be factoring in.
I think you're right on because new apartments coming in, if they add 150 kids, that's half a school.
Absolutely.
And, you know, either we build out for it or you let your classes swell to 30 kids, which nobody wants.
So I think some of the work this year is kind of addressing those large increases that we weren't able to address last year and then moving additional initiatives forward.
Now, do any initiatives ever go away?
I would say if it's an initiative that we value, it would then be incorporated into the budget. I think we could talk about that presentation and that process. But I think, you know, if it's, if the initiative is a new science teacher that we needed because numbers were higher and it was initiative this year, then next year, that sort of becomes part of level service because it was the service that we provided this year to maintain class sizes.
Yeah, and that's always a word that makes me shudder when you say level service because I never understand what that means.
I think that would be a good working session, Al. I think we could all come together and, you know, have a really good conversation around that because I honestly, I do think there's some different understanding. And I think it would be great to kind of have all those questions answered and addressed. But in my opinion, if you approve a teaching position this year, it isn't then a new initiative last year because it was.
No, and I think that's some of the confusion when you say initiatives. I'm teaching chemistry. If I get 30 more kids and I need another teacher, that doesn't feel like a new initiative. It just feels like dealing with the extra kids.
And we've talked to Dr. McInchire about that because I really feel like we kind of had this one year particularly, you know, 2018, 2019, with significant enrollment increase. And we didn't add any heads. And I understand adding during the year is complicated. But exactly to that point, if we're not addressing the need, then it all gets later on to the new initiatives. And it's really just addressing enrollment numbers.
Yeah, I guess we always thought of new initiatives as a new program. Something different. Swelling class sizes, you know, going from an extra 30 kids into a class. So now, all of a sudden, you're sitting there at 290 or 280 versus 240 or 250. I mean, that's a lot easier in my mind to justify increasing the budget for. I mean, don't get me wrong, I love the idea of doing the biotech. You know, never forget when I walked into the C Wing and I looked and said, this is really cool. This science lab looks just like what I was here 40 years ago. That one just seemed to be, wait a minute, we haven't done very much updating.
And that's the infrastructure, right? To be clear, curriculum and our learning has changed fundamentally. I think as a community, we're also incredibly lucky to have made the Chromebook investment when we did because we certainly have been using those devices and we're able to add on to that investment as well. But I hear you completely, that those rooms look the same, so.
Yeah, now, I mean, with the investment, and we always knew that the investment in the science wing was two parts. Just we couldn't eat it all in one year.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I think it makes sense in terms of procuring it, Absolutely. And I think it makes sense in terms of procuring it, implementing it in the curriculum and then adding on to it. So I, I think everyone is on the same page in terms of doing that in two phases. So I think that is a great, was a great decision.
We're talking a lot about increasing, when I say class size, I don't mean individual, but years, you know. Going up thirty, forty kids, seniors. How is immigration affecting that?
Yeah, certainly. So I believe this is the first year that particularly at Memorial Elementary, we actually have more EL families than non-EL families. So that's kind of like a, a changing point for us. So I definitely think that is some factor in driving the numbers, for sure.
So now you're saying there's more fam, more kids in there that need to learn English than kids grown up in English.
Correct.
That's amazing.
It is.
I mean, when I grew up, I was one of the few who came into the school system not knowing any English. Stepped out of the house and all of a sudden it's like, who are these kids and why are they speaking this funny language?
Absolutely.
But now the state has recognized that Milford's unique, haven't they?
Certainly. So they've modified their funding formula to account for kind of the needs in the districts. And so they define high need students, which would include English learners, because just, you know, factually, they take more to educate. Because you're educating them in English. And so they've revised their funding formula. And you'll see that come across certainly in the chapter seventy allocation that we've been receiving. That continues to in pretty cities, pretty substantially. And so they're recognizing those districts. Look, these districts have more work to do and we want to help them do that work. And so we're really fortunate in that case, because I think there are nearby districts that don't have the same demographic or population. And they're not seeing that same increase. So in that regard, it is helping us.
Yeah, but we've been paying for it for years.
We have, we have, we've been doing it and we've been doing a great job with it on a limited budget. So absolutely.
I mean, the end of the day, I think chapter seventy, once you explain, what is chapter seventy?
Sure. So we get funding from the state and it's basically on a per pupil basis. And so they have kind of a formula, and it's really interesting, Al, because even the per pupil expenditures, right? You just can't take your whole budget and divide it by your students and say, here's your per pupil. There's sort of always these ins and outs, right? So it's, it's never as direct, I think, as you like for it to be. But basically, the town is reimbursed for all of the students that it educates. And so for our school budget, you know, a piece of that, a significant piece is chapter seventy-eight. And then a piece is a local contribution, which is the money that the town's providing. And so our budget essentially consists of those two funding sources.
Yeah, and the chapter seventy pays, what, forty-seven percent?
It's going up. So I put a little chart together. I'd be happy to show, the kind of compares the local versus the chapter seventy contribution. Because it's interesting to watch it trend over time.
But at least it's going in the right direction for the first time.
Absolutely. And consistently, in fairness, over the past eight, five to eight years, it's been trending in that way, yes.
But you know, it's a killer, because people don't understand the real demographic in Milford. You know, because it all comes down to what language do they speak? But we have a significant number of our kids who we have to give free meals to, don't we?
So our program, Al, in terms of, you know, be it food or backpacks or clothing, we have substantial need. And I think, you know, just for me personally, when you kind of think about that Maslow's hierarchy, right? You can't go and teach these kids math until they've had breakfast. And so I think as a district, you know, we've worked incredibly hard with a number of organizations. And Mrs. Tuttle runs a phenomenal food program, providing these kids and these families what they need. Be it that food to take home for the weekend, or kind of whatever they can. The Milford Humanitarian Coalition in conjunction with the YMCA was offering a phenomenal summer program. But yes, you know, there is significant, significant need, which we're working to address.
Isn't it like close to forty percent of our kids get some kind of subsidy on their food?
So it's actually very close to fifty percent, Al, and fifty percent is actually kind of a trigger. Where if you go beyond that, they basically say everyone kind of falls in the bucket. So we're actually very close to that number.
I think we're fortunate that all of our school, you know, everybody in the high school gets Oliva's food every day.
Pretty tough, right?
You can say tuttle, but when you come down to it, there's an Oliva hand in that food. So you know it's being prepared as best as it can.
Oh, absolutely.
School choice is always a fun topic to go through.
Certainly.
Opinion, is it going up, down? Are we addressing it?
Sure. So certainly, Al, as a, as a resident first and foremost, and then secondarily as a school committee member. I want every child who's living, lives in Milford to be educated in Milford. And I want that because I believe that the sense of community that our schools provide is unmatched. I grew up in Milford. I lived here a very long time before I went away for college and for early part of my professional career. I never felt as connected to this town as I did when my first son started kindergarten. It was just this sort of explosion of community. And I truly believe it is one of the best things about it. Milford has some negatives. I think our sense of community is truly unmatched. And I think that's kind of where that Milford pride comes from, because I think if you live here, you feel it. So if you live here, I want you to be educated here and I want to work very hard for you to want to be educated here. That said, there are reasons that you may choice your child, you may work in another district. You know, there may be a subset of reasons that that's the right decision for you, and I totally understand that. I would say twenty fifteen was really a peak year for us in terms of the number of students choicing out versus in. And since then, we've actually been trending in the right direction in that. Our numbers out are decreasing while our numbers in are going up. Now, interestingly, over the past two years, we really haven't been able to take many in, because our enrollment has been so high. We basically don't have room for many extra students. So it's kind of like tricky math at some point, because if you let more in, the funding would net, you know, better, but we don't have room for them. If you will. So over time, over the past five years, it's been trending in the right direction. Certainly, we still have students that, you know, opt to choice out, you know, and that's their family's decision.
Do you know the main reasons? I mean, I've heard things like, well, some kids go to Hope Dale because it's much smaller. You know, some kids go, are there anything that's come across that made sense to you as to why the majority of people are going out?
I wish I had that answer, Al. We actually did a survey about a year and a half ago. In my opinion, it was pretty inconclusive. I didn't think it yielded kind of what I expected to learn, which was really a disappointment. Because that is something that I would like us to be able to wrap our arms around. I want, I can't help but wonder. So, you know, certainly class size, I do think people leave maybe for a demographic choice, which is obviously their own decision. And I wonder if some is perception. I think, you know, for some reason, there's a perception that the schools aren't good. You know, we awarded or we recognized a number of scholars at our last school committee meeting. One of them happens to be, you know, a close family friend. He's, you know, was selected early decision to go to Cornell. I mean, I think Milford will give you a run for your money if you, you know, want to take it to that level. And I think the opportunities exist, be they in music or art or sports. We have this phenomenal sports program, athletic program, theater and arts, the music program's incredible. So I think the opportunity is there. I, I can't speak to, I would love to have a forum with all of those families and just an open and honest discussion, just to learn honestly. I think we tried the survey and personally, it wasn't, there wasn't enough tangible items from there in terms of how to take action.
But Meg, if a parent came to you and said. I'm trying to decide if I'm going to bring my child to Milford schools. Will they get a good education? How would you answer?
A hundred and ten percent. And honestly, Al, as a parent, as a kindergarten parent, because that is one of the most scary things you do. Is send your child to kindergarten for the first time, right? They're going to go on this bus and they're going to leave you and it's traumatic. And I did that. I went to a private school. I went to a Catholic school. I went to Memorial Elementary. And I'll tell you, I loved the things they saw there, and that's why my child's in the Milford Public Schools. They will absolutely get a great education and they'll get an even better education, Al, if you as a family put a lot into it. And so if you commit to the PTO and the school council and to showing up and investing in the sports and the music program. I think you'll have a great experience.
That was the real profound statement that I heard back then from Jose Viera. Principal at the elementary school. When I said, Jose, because I've known his family and my family's known his family from the old country, you know. I said, honestly, what can I do to get the best out of the Milford school system? And he said exactly what you did, get involved. There's no substitute for being on the parent teachers council or whatever it was. You know, and it all depends. I mean, my youngest always said she, she was traumatized, because she can remember the two field trips I missed. And I sat there and said, okay, your entire elementary and middle school, I missed two field trips. Trauma.
That's fantastic.
But you know, it's funny, because. I got more out of it, and I hope she got something out of having me there. But there was something wonderful about seeing her at all these field trips and growing up. You know, because by the time high school came around, then I was lucky to get her for two hours.
Absolutely. It changes quickly. Yeah, absolutely. And there is a community sense of that too, right? When you show up at those meetings and you as a parent have an opportunity to meet other parents and connect with other parents. It kind of, you know, continues to build that spirit, which is so important.
Now, in your mind, if somebody said, what is the most successful program in the Milford school system? What would you bring up?
Personally, Al, I think that is, it's a tough question, because I think it depends on where your child is engaged. And so my child is a musician, so I would say the music program. I have another child coming up who I presume I'm going to say it's the athletic program. You know, I think being able to take kind of higher level classes that are really challenging to them. My second grader participated in a STEM program. So I think it depends on your child's interests in terms of what's going to end up being the most valuable to them. So I don't think choosing one would be impossible.
But then, isn't that one of the strengths of Milford?
A hundred percent. I mean, if you look at, you know, the variety of languages, variety of AP classes, variety of clubs and activities and sports and instruments. You know, there's so much to be said for the options that your children have, and that I believe there's something for everyone. And I also, you know, when I look at the involvement of the teachers at every school, but I'm thinking particularly of the high school. If the kids want to start a club and they express interest, you know, they're willing to help them kind of in the middle school as well, right? They're willing to help them kind of formulate these and get things off the ground. So I think our teachers are incredibly invested. I think we've tested that this past year and we continue to see it. But I think that's what makes it so successful.
So you've got a child right at that critical age where social involvement sometimes means more than it should. You know, you start thinking about how much you really worried about people's perception or kids' perception when you were in seventh, eighth, ninth grade. How has it been with the kids now that they, I mean, they're not in school together, even though they see each other?
It's a challenge, you know, I think normally we wouldn't allow, you know, video games and different platforms kind of during the week. I think we, we've lessened our reign on that, just because it really is their opportunity for them to connect. When the weather was nicer, we let them do more things outside, so they still had that chance. But it's difficult for sure.
Now, as a school committee, how much time do you spend looking at balancing athletics and academics?
Oh, very little. So I would say almost all of our time is focused on academics. We, you know, get the occasional treat of Mr. Boucher coming in and sharing an athletic update. But as a general, our focus would be on the athletic piece. Certainly, if he has a budgetary request, you know, we're reviewing that. But that not, that isn't really a fundamental piece of our roles and responsibilities.
Yeah, but we're kind of lucky, because the first time I met Pete and he talked to me about how he had student athletes. Not athletes that pretend to study. I mean, he really hit home with me.
A hundred percent, Alan. He's incredibly engaged. We recently had a policy subcommittee meeting. We're reviewing the academic eligibility, right, for extracurriculars. And he was at that meeting to talk about it and to talk about what he does for children who are potentially at risk and how he engages with them. So I think we are incredibly unfortunate to have someone like him in that position.
You know, I think it frees the school committee up to focus on the academics. Because, you know, less than one percent or one tenth of one percent. Of the kids in Milford are going to make a living in an athletic role. So you got the other ninety-nine point nine percent that have to make it like everybody else does.
Absolutely. But I think combined with that, Al, he runs an incredibly successful program. So not only that, but you have these students who are engaged at a high level, who are loving it and flourishing and kind of having this great, you know, middle school and high school experience. We really expanded middle school sports too, which is phenomenal. We've seen kind of both pieces of that. So yeah, absolutely. And I think he worked incredibly hard over the summer and throughout this whole fall and winter, well, even last spring, quite frankly. Revising schedules and figuring out ways to get them to play, because I think that that socialization and that interaction is such a key component of the middle school and high school experience. And, you know, I think everyone involved in those programs kind of was putting in a hundred and eighty percent to, to make whatever they could happen.
Now, we talked about metrics. MCAS went away, I believe, this year.
So went away last year, it's going to happen this year. Yep, it's on, it's on the table right now, TBD.
How do you think we're going to do?
I think it's hard to say, Al. I mean, my expectation that we'll be on par with where we've been in the past. I do think that the spring, you know, if kids miss some learning at the end of the spring last year, that, you know, potentially could impact them. But my expectation that we would hopefully do fairly consistent with what we have in the past.
Okay, Megan, let's change topics now and look at sped programs. What do you think about Milford's special education offerings?
Absolutely. I think we have a very strong special education department now. You know, Ms. Jenkins, who runs the program, has a really big advocate for that group. And I think we're able to serve, you know, the immense and the variety of needs that we have in our districts. We're also supported by a strong CPAC, our Special Education Parents Advisory Council. So I would speak very highly of our special education programs.
Now, years ago, on the FinCom and the school committee, we got criticized for building too strong of a. Special needs program, that we were bringing in kids from all sorts of towns around us. And Milford taxpayers were paying the price. How do you feel?
Well, I would say as a parent, if I was a parent who was bringing a special needs child into the school, I would want to know that all of their needs were going to be met. And so I think we should be proud to offer a program that other people want to come to.
Yeah, well, that was my public position. I said, you know, on the way to helping Milford kids. We happen to help some kids that are non-Milford. I guess I don't feel too bad about that.
A hundred percent. And honestly, Al, that is something that we're constantly evaluating, because there are a number that we do have to send out of district based upon the type of needs that they have. And we're always looking at, would that be more cost beneficial to bring in? What are the numbers? Does that make sense? So, you know, unfortunately, there are some right now that we can't serve in Milford, and so we find a good placement for them and they are placed out of district. But, you know, cost benefit is an analysis that's kind of an ongoing assessment from a budgetary standpoint and a need standpoint.
Well, that's how we started the autistic program.
Absolutely. And our milestone kids, you know, are fully in school right now. So, well, not vacation week, but, you know, they're fully in school. So absolutely.
Yeah, I remember that it was pitched as a revenue creation, that we would be charging kids from outside the district. And making money. And I remember laughing, saying, I don't believe it for a moment. But I do believe and voted for the program because we'll be saving money.
Yeah, and I would look at it, you know, even more comprehensively, right? Like, we are a town in a state, you know, with all these nearby communities. And if we're together serving children who have needs, you know, we as a population are benefiting from that. And so I'm proud of the programs that we offer in special education, for sure.
I could see somebody having, I don't know if it's legit, but a gripe. If we were putting in programs for only non-Milford kids. You know, because it's our taxpayer dollars. But I have a hard time when you look at a kid and you say you don't want to help them, if you're doing it already for Milford.
Yep, absolutely. And even on the community use front, right? We have really great programs that non-residents want to participate in. Sometimes we'll offer a separate section for the non-resident. We're typically charging more for the non-resident. So if we have great programs, you know, and we have the ability and the bandwidth to share them, we want to. And certainly, if it helps to bring in some dollars, that's great as well.
Well, I don't think people understand where the money that Uncle Lenny collects goes. You know, I remember fifty thousand dollars to renovate the pool. And then a hundred thousand dollars to fix the pool. And I mean, we never paid a penny of that, because that came right out of the program.
That's true, but a recent request that I had is that we're just adding some additional transparency there. So all those items are now on the capital plan that goes to FinCom, even if the funding is sort of self-funded.
Yeah, last night I saw it for the first time.
I just think we want to keep everyone on the same page. And I think, you know, if we're making, you know, investments like that, that everyone should be aligned in terms of where those dollars are going. So we'll do that going forward.
Yeah, and again, you know, my pitch before was, I don't think anybody's going to argue against a good idea. You know, we really do get a lot of use out of that pool. And if it costs a hundred grand, if Lenny didn't come up with it, it would come out of our pockets.
The pool's an incredible asset and it runs incredible programs. Actually, my second grader was there. The Stingrays kind of offered a three-day clinic this week and it was packed. It was Milford at ten o'clock and non-residents at eleven thirty. And it's just, it's a phenomenal asset to have, absolutely.
Well, I go down there for the Special Olympics swimming. Because my daughter coaches. So it shows up on my calendar, you know, it's between the best buddies dances. And the swimming events, they all show up on my calendar. And of course, if I already have something on the calendar, I get the little note. Well, you know, Dad, they're only special needs kids. They don't need pictures. It's like, okay, let me take the knife out of my back.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Absolutely.
Now, we talk a lot about special needs being the kids who need help to get, excuse me, to get to the median. What are we doing for our Nobel laureates?
Yep, absolutely. So I would say at the earlier levels, Al, actually, that's one investment that we're hoping to make this year as a STEM teacher. At both Brookside and Memorial, kind of a full-time position for more of a official STEM education at the elementary levels. But then when you get to middle school and high school, right, I think it's really in the rigor of the classes that we offer, the higher level classes. And our, you know, large bandwidth of AP offerings at the high school. You know, I think those children are certainly very challenged and offered, afforded the opportunity to the extent they want to be challenged to take those type of classes. And they do extremely well. Our academic decathlon placed in the top ten in the state in a recent performance. Yes, yeah.
Why didn't we hear about that?
It was announced at the committee meeting last week. I would, I'm hoping it's going to come across in the crier next week. I'll be looking for that, absolutely.
Kevin Rudin and say.
Yep.
It would be big bowl letters.
No, a hundred percent. They did phenomenal and definitely should be celebrated. And in the same manner, we recognize some scholars that had received different awards within, you know, the state area. And we had a presidential scholar. We had someone that scored in the top in the country. So I, you know, I think our academic achievement is incredibly high. So I think we have a lot to be proud of.
See, and that's something that we don't take enough time. You know, it's always easy to say, people are school choicing out, or there's a leak in the roof. You know, all the bad news stuff seems to get around really, really fast. But I don't hear a presidential scholar.
That was in the crier. That was in the crier last week. Go pick up your, go pick up your edition. It's on the bottom fourth of a page. That was there. That was in the crier. That was in the crier last week. Go pick up your, go pick up your edition. It's on the bottom fourth of a page. That was there.
Well, I mean, the crier has turned out to be our local paper.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, the Milford Daily News on Sunday, I opened it up and it said, "Local news," and it talked about Natick. Natick isn't local.
Yep. I do feel like as a district, we've actually gained more press in the crier over the past two years. I feel like there has been more information and updates and items celebrated, so that's great. And I certainly would like to see more of it.
Now, when we start looking at these programs, do you feel they help the kids getting ready for college, the upper level programs?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So in addition, so certainly the AP courses offer, you know, an incredible amount of rigor and challenge to kind of help prepare them, you know, in college, which is phenomenal. But now we also offer this Metro West Early Scholars Program. And so we're giving children an opportunity to take part in college classes in high school. And the reason for that is if you look nationally, the college graduation rate is only around sixty, sixty-five percent, which is really pretty surprising when you kind of stop and think about it. And so we're trying to evaluate and Mr. Otlin is leading the charge on this and doing a phenomenal job is how do we better prepare these kids to succeed in school and complete school? You know, and the financial burden is certainly one component. And so if we're able to get kids to have college credit before they even start school, they're kind of going to be that much further ahead on the curve.
Do they still allow that? Because I know for a while you could take college courses and graduate like a semester early.
So that's not necessarily the intention of this. It's more to get credit such that when you go to school, you'll, you'll graduate college early, not high school, is really the intention of this. And they actually come on premise to teach those classes.
Yeah, but the colleges seem to not like giving you up, you know, a semester's thirty grand. It seemed like they flipped on us and said, "You can take all the advanced courses you want, but you're still going to be..." Some of the schools, like the one I know, you have to be there eight semesters.
Yep. I wouldn't say that they're probably signing up for this program, which is fine. It's not for everyone. But there's certainly a number of local schools that are participating.
Now, I heard something that was confusing to me, that the kids are no longer given their class rank?
Yes, that was a recent change that we made or that we approved that was brought to us by the high school principal. It's really interesting. So the way it turns out, or at least the way it was explained to us, is when kids are applying to college, if a class rank is available, they're sort of required to put it on their application. So really what it has the effect of doing is hurting a child who class rank-wise maybe isn't, you know, where they should be or, you know, in the kind of the top echelon. If you don't make that metric available, they're just evaluating, you know, all the information you bring forth in terms of your grades, your academic achievement, your extracurricular achievement. So it was actually really viewed as a way to help our students. Now, certainly we have, you know, a valedictorian, a salutatorian. We will still continue to celebrate those honors and those achievements. But we just felt like it was putting a lot of stress on the children and it really just, there was really no, it didn't serve a purpose.
Hmm, it sounds like ribbons for all.
No, 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 no. I mean, you still have your GPA, right? You're still challenged. You still kind of, you know, know that type of information, but a number and an overall rank just wasn't deemed to be beneficial. It was interesting, actually. I have a relative who's a high school guidance counselor in New York State, actually. And she was talking about some of these districts where they actually have to employ like counselors, like for traumatic events that they bring in, crisis counselors, on the day that certain test scores are released because there's so much anxiety in these schools about these particular test scores. And it just makes you think like, what have we come to that, you know, we have this like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old that is experiencing such an event over a score? So our, our hope is that it will help more students. So that's really why we made the decision to support that.
What are they going to do when they get out into the real world? And you can't have trauma counselors when you interview and don't get a job.
Noted. It's, it's a challenging, it's a challenging time to be a kid. I think, you know, the whole social media brings a whole, you know, another host of challenges. So you just hope to raise your child to be resilient. And certainly, you know, unfortunately, in the past twelve months, they've had a lot of opportunity to test that.
Are we taking any positive steps towards building the female role model in the high school? I mean, I think about where the programs have come now and how many colleges and companies are really starting to realize that fifty percent of our talent pool is not old men? You know, I just wonder, are we doing enough, you think, to show girls? I mean, my girls grew up, I said, someday you're going to run into an old dinosaur. I'll think them, I'll run them, just go through them. Not that that was very insightful, but are there any programs to kind of show girls that the world is there for them?
Yeah, I think our SEO program, Al, you know, really kind of comprehensively is addressing those types of issues. I would also say I think that mentality is getting outdated, right? I think that, yeah, I feel like the youth of today, they don't see that as a barrier. They don't know that as a challenge, which I think is really refreshing. And so I almost think they have the mentality that we want to kind of embrace, right, as older Americans. So I think it's important. I think, you know, when you see the students that come before us, it's male, female alike in terms of all the achievements that we're celebrating. So I don't, I don't see a divide in that way. And I think we have great male and female teachers and staff kind of across the board, be it at the administration level or teaching, which I think are supporting those type of role models that you're talking about.
Well, I'll have to disagree with you when you put yourself in the old category. You're my age, you can call yourself old. You are nowhere near in the old category. Point where, Megan, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
A hundred percent. Thank you, Al. So I hope that I've earned your vote because I'm hardworking. I'm an active listener and I'm an effective collaborator. And I've served three years on this committee and I believe that I can do a lot more good if I have the opportunity to serve three more.
What would, last question. What would be your signature event accomplishment in the next three years?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, Al, I think. So when I first joined, I joined the policy subcommittee and we had a policy that said we had school committee goals, but we didn't actually have goals on paper. And so I've established that in the three years that I've been on committee. And I really would just like to see, continue to see us drive that effort forward and be accountable for the things that we should own as a committee and continue to move our district forward.
Well, again, thank you for being one of the rare people who steps up and not only has an opinion, but is willing to put it into play and help the kids.
It's been an honor.
Look forward to working with you for another three years.
Thanks, Al.
As always, to our six loyal viewers, you've heard me before. I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate, but I'll beg you to become educated and vote. There's a lot of programs around, this one, Kevin Rudden, Citizens from Milford. There's, and one I love is the one at the school where they get the kids to become educated as far as what candidates they should vote for. So please, get out and vote. And as always, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better day than today. Thanks, Meg.